Good evening. We'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, December the 10th, 2019. It is now 6:30 PM. Would you please stand for the invocation by Pastor Bob from Impact Church? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our God and Father, thank you for the privilege of being able to gather as a community this evening. Father, our prayers continue to be for our community, for strengthening the families, for strengthening our children, for the protection that those who provide that God that you're blessed and strengthen them. Father, we pray for the activities in this room this evening, that the search for wisdom will not be unending. That, Father, we, as we reach out to you for guidance and counsel, surely you will provide. So, Father, thank you for the people who have taken the leadership roles in this community. May they be blessed tonight as they lead, in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Curts.
President.
Me check.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Lamarcus.
Seven, President, we have a quorum. Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. First one on the books is Maryville Community Center Recreation Center Bid Package Number Two. Piers, precast, site electric roughing, and review, and recommendations, and award. We do these one at a time, before all together.
Do it one at a time.
Okay, we've heard trade package number five, aggregate, piers. Mister, what do you got?
President Hardaway, we, professional staff, myself, have looked over, completed bid package two. Trade package five, CNC Foundations Incorporated, was the lowest responsible, responsive bidder, at a cost of $215,827. And we're gonna accept Core's recommendation in awarding that contract to CNC Foundations for that amount for trade package five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve trade package number five, for $215,827. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?
No.
Who knows?
Any more knows?
No.
He knows.
Motion carries.
Let me ask a question, please. Okay, now, on these bids, who sat in with the approval of these bids?
For the approval?
Yeah, who was, who was present for all this?
Core is our, Core is our construction management company, Marge, that, that over, that opens all the bids, reviews all the bids, and then with approval of town attorney, these, these are, these are awarded for the lowest and responsible bidder. They're open in, these bids are open in public here,
Okay.
in, in bid meetings. So Sheila and I are here, Matt, Matt's here in the room when, when everything's opened.
Was that the lowest bid?
Yes.
What was the highest?
The highest bid was Foundation Service Corporation, $237,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, motion passes four to three. Trade package number six.
Trade package number six is for the precast concrete panels for the building. The lowest responsible, responsive bidder was Duquesne Precast Incorporated, at a contract amount of $957,161. They are the lowest bidder. We do, again, recommend Core's, concur with Core's recommendation on awarding this to Duquesne Precast, and I'll just put this out there, Marge. They were the lowest bidder. The highest bidder was HEMI Precast, had a bid of $1,297,300. That was our highest bid.
Motion to approve trade package number six, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve trade package number six. Any discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes four to three. Trade package number seven.
Trade package number seven is site electric roughing, which will be in the parking lot area. Sweeney Electric was a low bidder, $44,700. We do concur with Core on this, again, in awarding this contract to Sweeney for $44,700. The highest bidder was MJ Electric, and they were at a cost of $146,900.
Motion to approve bid package number seven, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve trade package number seven. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes four to three. Is there anything else under that, or are we done with that? I would say we're done. Number two, letter from the Town Engineering Administrator endorsing Core Construction's recommendation in awarding a contract for bid package number two. We have a letter.
Yes. Yeah, there's letters in the packet.
Yeah, letters should be in the packet.
Okay.
Are each of these letters, Steve, for each individual?
Item.
Item?
Oh, it's just a general, it's just a general letter. Councilman Pettit, that, that does recognize the highlighted, the highlighted awards. Everybody should have these, these two forms.
Okay.
If you can look at the letter, and you can refer to the...
But we need to act on these.
The bid tabs.
Can you read one into the record? Read one, read a letter.
Oh, the town's professional staff have reviewed the bids for the, for the new Maryville Community Recreation Center project. We, we accept Core's recommendation in awarding contract to the lowest responsible, responsive bidder for bid package two, as highlighted in the attached bid summary. Welcome.
Uh, the letters from the Town Engineering Administrator award for professional services recommended by Core. Anything else under petitions, communication, remonstrations? Mister Reardon, what do you got?
Mister President, item three, you also, you have letters here from Engineering Administrator King. And we quest, pardon me, requesting permission to move forward here.
Yeah, these are letters for professional services, recommendation award for professional services for site survey and layout work for the community center project. The D, recommend, along with Core in awarding the, the site survey and initial layout work to the DVG team in the amount of $4,000. And then I also recommend, a recommendation to award for professional services for advanced engineering services. It's, it's site testing, materials testing during construction of the community center. That would be on a time and material basis, and Core and I have gone over this. And they've, AES has done some initial work for us on the project already. They're not the lowest bidder. Al Wergen was the lowest bidder, but we, I felt that having AES involved in this project from the beginning, they gave us recommendations when we were putting the contract together. I felt that they were gonna be the most responsible for, for the project, and that's why I was recommending that we use AES services.
Okay, we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve the recommendation letters coming from the Engineering Administrator, Mister King. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes four to three. Consent agenda, Councilor Payable Register Voucher Approval for December the 10th, along with the approved Town Council meeting minutes for November the 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Usalak, second by Councilwoman Baron, Councilwoman Baron, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, later on in the agenda, I believe to Mister Reardon, we're going to be making some transfers, correct? So that we can allocate the funds for the Westlake Corridor payment?
Correct.
Is that payment on the claims list, so that the check can be cut to the county?
It is there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is it in here, Gene? All right. It's on the last page. I'm scrolling through my iPad, man, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's on the last page.
I just wanna make sure it's in there, so we don't have to approve it, we get that in timely, back to the county that we're supposed to. So...
Everything at least timely comes in slow.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Standing Committee Budget and Finance, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Budget, Public Works, Councilman Minchuk.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamarcus. Personnel, Policy, and Employee Benefits, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public Safety, Councilwoman Usalak.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
I do. I'd just like to report that all 30 trees have been planted per the guidelines set forth by the Little Calumet River Basin Project Grant. I submitted a PO for payment, and will send that to Mister Repay for reimbursement. And the cost of the 30 trees was, I believe, $10,473. We have them planted at Adam Benjamin Park, Stephick, Cruzin, and Wortis Park. Playground is being delivered tomorrow, that was from the Game Time Grant, the 6535 split. That'll be delivered tomorrow, that'll be stored in the North Barn until we can install it in the spring. And that's for Crescent Lake Park. For the Recreation Center, I just wanna update everybody that I've completed the job descriptions for the positions that will be available. I've sent them off for approval. Any changes, you can certainly get back with me, and I'll make those. I've also completed a Rec Center General Budget, taking out all maintenance and concentrating just on the Rec Center, so we will be able to, will be able to do profit and loss statements specifically on the Rec Center. I turn that over to Angie, so we can get new fund numbers for that budget. I've also completed a preliminary salary proposal for the Center, and a comparative study, side by side, with a feasibility recommendation by Arsh Group. You might wanna take a look at that. And I've sent that off. And lastly, I've completed a revenue projection for 10 years out, from 2021 to 2030, on the Recreation Center. We had our Santa procession last Friday night. I would truly love to thank the Lions Club. They worked and worked really hard to put a float in the procession. It was a beautiful float. They came with refreshments and cookies for everybody that was there. I also would like to thank the Maryville High School Band, they always do an excellent job. Lastly, on my report this evening, is in regards to Census 2020. We had a meeting today, at that meeting, the Maryville School Corporation was represented, the Crossroads Chamber of Commerce, the Ross Township Trustees Office, and the Town of Maryville was represented by, thank you guys, Sheila and Steve from Planning. We had representation from the Clerk Treasurers Office and the Park Department. And we came out of that meeting with some really good ideas to move forward with getting the word out for the 2020 Census. And we will meet again sometime mid to end January. That's the end of my report, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Oh, yes, Jan, did you say that the equipment was delivered for Crescent Lake Park?
I said it will be delivered tomorrow.
Oh, it will be delivered, okay. And where do you store it?
North Barn.
Oh, okay.
Until the spring.
How much was the grant for that?
I don't remember offhand, somewhere around $12,000, I believe.
Oh, well, that's great. So they'll start in the spring.
Yeah, when Public Works is available, we'll coordinate a schedule with them, and pull out all the old equipment, and then put the new equipment in.
Oh, good, because I've been talking to the people out there about it. Thank you.
Uh, Maryville Affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
I had no report, Matt.
I'm gonna report this time.
Section Public Relations, Councilwoman Usalak.
Uh, no report.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Utility Land Zone, Councilman Span.
No report.
Abandoned Properties, no report. That concludes Standing Committee Ordinances, first reading ordinance, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, an ordinance 94-05, entitled, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the establishment of a Town, Maryville Town Court, as it pertains to the closure of the Maryville Town Court, and the orderly transition of cases, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances, or parts thereof, in conflict herewith.
Mister, Mister President, to Mister Svetinoff, I'd like to make a motion to take ordinance 19-27A off the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Minchuk, that we remove ordinance 19-27A. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 17-27B, an ordinance amending Town Ordinance 9405, entitled, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the establishment of a Maryville Town Court, as it pertains to the closure of the Town of the Maryville Town Court, and orderly transition of cases, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances, or parts thereof, in conflict herewith.
Motion to approve ordinance 19-27B, Mister President, with the caveat that this transition will end, no questions asked, December 31st of 2020. That gives an entire calendar year 2020 to transition these cases over to the county.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve ordinance 19-27B. My question, Councilman, is what about the pay part of this for three years, two, three, and four? Is that something separate?
That would be separate, I think.
Okay. Any other discussion?
That will be handled, Mister President, I think, in the preparation of the 2021 budget and the 2021 salary ordinance.
There you go.
Okay, then we are allowed to lower the judge's salary.
Yes, you are.
If we so choose, but what we're gonna do with this 2020 transition, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, is the town employees and the town judge will continue to receive their salary until December 31st of 2020. So everyone is given a one-year notice that this is taking place. And then, as we sit, the incumbents that are coming back, as we sit and prepare the budget for next year, this will be a discussion of what the judge's salary would be.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor?
Joe?
Any way the Town Council wants to proceed on this, but what we are doing in effect is giving a transition period of one year. If the Town Council wants to sit down with the judge that's chosen in the caucus to take some austerity measures right away to reduce costs, because again, we're operating projected next year, or this year upcoming, at a $289,000 loss for the Town Court. So if the, the new judge coming in, the Town Council wants to sit down with them to take austerity measures right away, that could be done as well. So, but what I think Councilman Pettit's point of, point of view is right now, is that at the end of next year, that the transition of all cases will be made, and then the Town Council can then go from there and assess how they're gonna proceed forward.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Span.
I, I was looking at that tab one.
Minchuk.
Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Use that. Yes. Darren?
Yes.
Darren?
Oh, I thought we were all pausing before we were asking our votes. Yes.
I was trying to figure out where we're at.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Are we at a meeting, are we looking at ties, are we dreaming?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mister President?
Yes.
Mister Svetinoff, is there a need, given the calendar, to do, to have this on second reading? And suspend the rules, or?
It would be, it could be recommended that you go ahead and, because we did conduct a workshop before this actual meeting took place, to inform the public of what we were doing, and the media was invited. So at this time, if the Town Council wanted to go ahead and suspend the rules, and consider this on second reading, it would be proper.
So moved, Mister President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we suspend the rules for ordinance 19-27B. Is there any discussion?
Are we supposed to have a second reading, or we can vote to suspend it, or what?
You can vote to suspend it.
So that's what they're...
That's my motion now, Marge, you...
All right, I got what you said, but I just wondered if it was legal.
Yeah.
Okay, it's legal. Okay, Chrissy, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Ordinance 19-28, an ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana...
One more.
Amending ordinance 19-26, and specific part of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, for the calendar year 2020.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve ordinance 19-28. Any discussion? All in fa, uh, roll call, sorry. Mister Curts.
Span. Span. Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Edit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Ordinance 19-29, an ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County...
Mister President, I think Councilman's being abstained from the vote, so it would actually be six, six-four.
Oh, oh, I get it, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you say...
I didn't either.
Okay, all right. With, uh, motion carries with six-four and one extension. Thank you. Uh, ordinance 19-29, an ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, fixing the parks, non-reverting program fees for the year 2020, establishing fees for the 2020 Park Department program.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve ordinance 19-29. Any discussion? Roll call.
Span. Yeah? Minchuk?
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Edit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yeah.
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. That concludes first reading ordinance, and second reading ordinance, ordinance 19-27B, an ordinance amending Town Ordinances 9405, entitled, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the establishment of a Maryville Town Court, as it pertains to the closure of the Maryville Town Court, and the orderly transition of cases, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances, or parts thereof, in conflict herewith.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman, Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve ordinance 19-27B on second read.
I don't have 27.
I don't either.
No, because this is the second reading, that's by the Clerk Treasurer.
We decided to suspend the rules, so this is up on second, second read.
Go back to the same one.
Oh, I was with you too.
Because this is a second reading ordinance, at this time, we can open it up for public comment on ordinance 19-27B. Any public comment on ordinance 19-27B? Any public comment on ordinance 19-27B? Roll call.
Roll call, all right, hang on. Span. Yes. Okay, a span? Same. Same? Same?
Edit?
Minchuk?
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Edit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes, motion passes six with one extension. That concludes second reading ordinances, resolutions. Resolution 19-56, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the CCD Fund.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve resolution 19-56. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Uh, resolution 19-57, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the Fire Territory Operating Fund.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Usalak, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve resolution 19-57. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 19-58, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the General Fund to pay the Town of Maryville's pledged amount for the Westlake commuter rail transportation work.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Usalak, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve resolution 19-58. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes resolutions. No BCA action, any old business. Any new business? At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hubba hubba.
Leonard White, Leonard White, Maryville, Indiana, 5761, Grand Street. I just had a question on the Westlake project. What is putting this money in this project? What is Maryville getting out of this?
Out of what?
Putting the money into the Westlake project.
Counselor, do you want to answer that, about our south shore?
Well, the...
What that was?
The reason, are you asking why the transfer is being made?
No, no.
Or are you asking what the town is getting out of it? Why we're supporting the Westlake, Leonard?
What is Maryville getting out of it?
Well, eventually, eventually in phase two, the Westlake Corridor right now will be down the west side of Westlake, as it, as it explains. A second phase that the congressman wants to implement is along the Grand Trunk here north, where there will be a stop in Maryville, and there would be stops in ongoing east into Valparaiso. So that's why, that coupled with the fact that Pete has brought millions of dollars back to his district here in Maryville, and why I support it.
Yeah, I understand that part, I just want to make sure that Maryville, since they're paying for a portion of this, that we get something out of it.
It's, it's gonna be down the road, but there are plans that we would have a station on Broadway at the Grand Trunk. Yes, in phase two.
And, and what year?
I have no idea, I mean, that you're, you're asking FTA, funding questions.
The attorney, no? Because I'm, well, the reason I'm saying is because if we don't have any idea as to when we're gonna get a benefit from it, and we're just constantly pumping dollars in there, I don't wanna be 80 years old when this thing happens.
You may be.
I may be.
One of the situations that we've run into is that the commitment has been made, and we are contractually bound by that commitment that was made a long time ago, and we have to live up to that commitment. That's why we're doing this transfer right now. So, to know when, when the depot's gonna be built on Broadway, I do not know this. But I know that we, the town has made a commitment, and we have to live up to that commitment.
Is there any paperwork that you may have on that, so I can review that? Because I don't have an idea. I don't think a lot of the council people actually have an idea.
Well, actually, actually, I did issue an opinion letter to the council people regarding the deficiency in our contribution, and how we need to rectify that.